Number two on the agenda is Pledge of Legions. I did want to note that Council Lions and Chair Buo are not present this evening. Number three, Rules of Order. City council meetings are conducted according to Robert's Rules of Order unless otherwise provided for and adopted by the city council at their annual organizational meeting in November. Number four, adoption of the Ellsworth City Council Meeting Minutes from the following meetings: May 20, 2024, regular meeting minutes; May 29, 2024, special meeting minutes.
Move to approve, and also, I really like the new way that they're written.
Yeah, the new minutes are terrific.
Great.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Ananmas. Number five, City Manager's Report. Manager Pierce?
Thank you very much, Tammy. First, just kind of just a note on the budget. We're finalizing the council recommendations right now. We've got, this Thursday is our final budget workshop, our sixteenth, I counted them, of the season. That might be a personal record or an Ellsworth record. I wasn't there for probably four of them, but watched prior to coming in, so I feel like I've been there in spirit with you for all of them. And while that's an excessive amount, I think we accomplished a lot of things that are going to be helpful to this budget in terms of clarity and improving policies and procedures, but that are also really going to kind of set the groundwork for next year's budget cycle as well, but also for like the tracking day-to-day once we go to July 1st. Like, the work is not done. Once we pass the budget, it's into implementation and staggering the spend and, you know, as we've talked about in some of our Finance Committee meetings, that the first Friday of each following month, that we'll review the previous month's budget so we can kind of really, you know, continue tracking and make sure we're all on the same page for how the people's money's getting spent. So, looking forward to getting out of the planning budget cycle and into the implementation, but we're going to keep on it there. And then the following Wednesday, June 26th, is the special council meeting to vote on the budget for FY '25. So, this Thursday's meeting, we'll be doing kind of more high-level, you know, here's the report and where we're at based on council recommendations as I've sort of seen them through the process, and then any sort of last tie-ups that we need before the next meeting. We're still debating whether we're going to print new budget books for everybody. We'll definitely have it fully updated online this coming Thursday for what, and then we'll probably print, we'll definitely print one out for the public's viewing, and I could see bringing ones for new council, ones, new budget materials, and maybe having the first part of this Thursday is just, here's your new stuff, this is, and we'll take you through the log changes of everything we've done in there, just so you know that. But then we'll probably state a big picture, the final, the final capital, high-level discussion of debt with our interim finance director, our final TIF recommendations. I think we're in good shape on the accounting there. It's really more of an informational piece. And then the last piece is kind of the local roads and a decision point there. And then we should be in good shape to go to budget passage, or not, the next week. So, that's it for budget. On staffing, I've got a couple updates. One is I want to announce that Tony Dyer, our longtime city clerk, is leaving the organization at the end of the month. She's taking a job as an HR manager for a large mortgage company. As many of you know, Tony was actually the HR director here in Ellsworth for a period of time, and got every confidence she's going to do great in her new job, and so grateful for everything she's helped me with in my own onboarding here. She also was our finance director for a period of time. Tony really did an amazing job of picking up a lot of hats in helping this team really since she's been here in 2020. So, really want to thank her for her dedicated years of service. All she's helped our customers receive efficient, effective business, election, and citizen services, and we really wish her the best of luck on her new endeavor. In the interim, and I've, you know, we've got some city manager appointments on the docket here in light of this, I think my recommendation was going to be to appoint Sue McLean, who's with us tonight, our tax collector, and somebody who I rely on every day for her wealth of institutional knowledge. She's stepped up, she's in that front office area, knows this business very well, so she's, my recommendation, should the council move forward, is to appoint Sue as our interim city clerk. She's also, well, this isn't appointment-related, she's going to be partnering with Tina, our general assistance director, who's got over 20 years of experience, including a lot of clerk experience there, to help in this effort. I should also say our two deputy clerks, Ebony and Caitlin, are doing an amazing job, and, you know, so really very comfortable in the transition process, and Tony's going to be helping out in this transition process to make sure everybody has what they need so no balls are dropped in their intervening time, and I'm looking forward to partnering with this whole group on next steps, so. Another staffing update, our, we have concluded the interview, first round interview process for the finance director position. I think the total was 27 applicants. We ended up interviewing five, very excellent candidates. I think we're in our kind of final stages of firming up a recommendation to come to council for approval on, on that process, so I think we'll, I think we'll be finished up potentially by the end of the week with a potential recommendation. There might be one further interview we may look to do and maybe bring in some counsel on, it's such a critical position, but really excited there, thankful to the team. You can imagine scoring 27 resumes and making all the notes so that we're really, a lot of qualified applicants. Felt like I learned a lot from a lot of organizations around Maine and around the country on how they approach budgeting, and I think we're going to have great department announcements shortly. And the police chief, we're also finalizing the interview process for that this week, and then we will, I think hopefully, have an announcement by the end of the month on that one, or at least in the first part of July, so. The other piece is the High Street upgrades. I know they're opening the bid soon for the High Street work from the Maine DOT. Looking forward to kind of touching base with our team on that. That will sort of dictate whether that could be a fall or a spring project. I want to stay as updated for the city and for everybody else as soon as possible on when that kind of work would be done. Now, it's a nighttime project, but we obviously want to be well-informed. I don't have time clarity just yet, but I know council and the community, I'm sure, is going to be eager to know when that project will move forward. As council's already approved, we have a whole suite of, you know, things we need to upgrade in order for that project to move forward, and, you know, those have already been, we put out, you know, I think the funding recommendations from various bonds have been approved previously by council, but we're getting the final, like, here's the numbers to actually purchase these things, just so, whether it's the fall, whether it's the spring, our purchase and our piece of it is sort of done and finished, and we don't have to worry about inflation increasing those prices further, so. Also want to know, council, just give a, I know some of you are aware, but the Moore Center lease is up for renewal at the end of August. I think I'm going to be asking for an extension on that to maybe the end of the year, just so, you know, with all the budget focus lately, I feel like that might be a little bit too quick with timeframe to do the amount of research and coordination with this team on that lease and what we like, what we don't like, what we want to reimagine together. So, I really, you know, after the budget process concludes, might be looking to extend that lease-as-is through end of the year, but really, you know, starting in July, we'll start figuring out the process to analyze that and potentially provide recommendations on changes or modifications, so. Office storage is another piece. I have noticed that a lot of the offices in City Hall are kind of filled with boxes and binders from decades past, and we've kind of reached, there's all the catacombs in the attics are full of, you know, there's just no more room. So, even my own office is of this. I've kind of cleaned it out until what is sort of needed paperwork-wise for the city manager. It was good to review a lot of what's been in there, but also what's just become kind of storage there, and I'm not the only office in this kind of situation, so looking at what we, how we do with paperwork storage. That's not just continuing to fill everybody's office with more and more boxes, you know, it's, and I don't know whether that's a storage unit or looking at some of our facilities and how we can make safely, you know, I think a lot of these fall into areas where they're, you know, paperwork that's past the expiration on holding them and, you know, and not relevant to historical records. But then there's some that may be past the expiration of, we need to hold them, but are actually really unique historical records, so want to make sure we start figuring out a way to declutter offices from holding all this paper, but to make sure that we're doing due diligence on keeping what needs to be for records and trying to figure out that storage space piece. And that's it. I'm trying to keep it quick tonight. We have, hopefully, a quick agenda, the first one in at least my tenure year and maybe this whole calendar year, so. Trying to avoid Steve having me put a second council meeting on. If we give out by eight tonight, maybe we can get there. That, I'll send it back over to you, Tammy.
All right. Anybody have any questions from Pierce? Okay, so number six is presentation of awards, and we have no awards tonight. So, number seven is committee reports. There is a request for an appointment of Rick Lyles and Carol Manson to the Ellsworth Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, so maybe we can start with that, and then we can go on to individual commission reports.
Move to, do we have to make a motion? Move to appoint Rick Lyles and Carol Manson to the Ellsworth Housing Authority Board of Commissioners.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Does anyone have any committee reports?
The Recreation Commission met just the day after the last council meeting, and we'll meet again tomorrow morning at 8:30 here in these chambers if anybody wants to join. It's a grand time. The, it looks like we're getting close to a replacement of the slides, thanks to especially Jim McLean in Facilities and the work of a lot of folks in City Hall.
There was someone out there today working on it.
Oh, wow.
When I walked by.
It was on Facebook today that one of the slides is up.
Yeah, I was very happy.
If it was on Facebook, it's true.
A long time coming, but it's exciting. There was a very successful and fun recreation fair down at the Union River Center for Innovation on the eighth. Next year, it's going to be even bigger and better, thanks to all the nonprofits who came out and all the business sponsors. It's a good, it was a good time. The tennis courts were just resurfaced over at the school, and they are for public, available for public usage, so all of you tennis fans, you know, get out there and contact the school and see when they're available. That's all I have.
I just have that the comprehensive plan steering committee meets next Monday, so in case anyone's interested in coming to that.
The Historic Preservation Commission has an update regarding the relief mural at the peak of City Hall. There's been ongoing work on trying to figure out what to do and what the next steps are. Jim with Facilities has been incredibly helpful with that, and they are to the point of requesting permission to work with Jim to have it removed and brought down, number one. Let's stop the damage that's happening with the weather, and then they can take a look at it and figure out what next steps might be, whether it's restoration or what we can do, so. I don't know if that requires a motion, but they would like permission to be able to remove the mural, again, working with Jim to make that happen.
I don't think so. I don't think it needs a motion.
So, if we just acknowledge they have permission to move forward with that with Jim?
We have to get it fixed, so.
Yeah.
It's the only way we can do it.
Well, and get it to not lean on somebody's head, so.
True.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Anybody else? Nope. Okay, moving on. Number eight, citizen comments. This is the area on the agenda where citizens may speak on items that are not on the agenda. We request that you come to the podium and state your name and keep the comments to no longer than three minutes. They also have the opportunity to speak on agenda items when that, when that agenda item is brought up. You want me to just take them and pass it down?
Sure. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, sure. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Gordon Workman, resident of Ellsworth. I'm here as a member of the Surrey Road Neighborhood Preservation Association. Honorable Ellsworth Maine City Councilors, the Surrey Road Neighborhood Preservation Association respectfully request that an item would be added to the Ellsworth Maine City Council Meeting Agenda for the July 15, 2024 meeting. This added agenda item would be for the sole purpose of having an open, straightforward discussion between the community of Ellsworth, Maine, and its elected city council members and necessary appointed city staff on the proposed new courthouse location in a residential neighborhood zone at 120 Surrey Road here in Ellsworth. Respectfully, the Surrey Road Neighborhood Preservation Association. The reason being, it's time for a conversation with the people. This wait-and-see attitude cannot happen. We need to move on this. There's been stuff, there's been items have happened. Everyone said, "Well, there's nothing we can do." Well, there has been items that have been done by the town, all the way back to November. That's why we're in this predicament, because it's been told to the state about this location, how it can be used and how it can be put in that location by special use, and now it's being similar use, because special use didn't work, because the city would have to fund part of that, and the city's not going to fund any of that. So, now they're looking at similar use. So, the city is doing something. They should be working for the residents to preserve the Surrey Road for the residents. It's a family neighborhood zone. I don't know what the driving force to this is for this area, but it's not a good area, it's not a good proposed location. It needs to have a discussion openly with its citizens and the community that lives there and pays taxes there. Barbara Cado, she sent out an email this past week, had just, with a paper. The fact she's saying about the having it at the present site cannot work. Well, these are all not true. Says that would have to remove for tearing down a historic home. Well, that's not true. The only building they would have to take down is the old DA building, which District Attorney's Office, which is crumbling before we see it anyway.
It's three minutes.
Sorry, three minutes. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello, good evening. My name's Aaron Doherty. I'm the executive director of Frenchman Bay Conservancy.
And I'm Cara Romano, the executive director of Heart of Ellsworth.
And we just wanted to come here and talk to you about an opportunity. We are supporting the economic study of the Union River, and we're working with an economist to look at how the removal of the Leonard Lake Dam may impact the city of Ellsworth. There's a decision that's being made by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission with guidance from other state and federal agencies, and also the city has the opportunity and has had the opportunity for input as well on the future of the dam. We acknowledge that one possibility is the removal of the Leonard Lake Dam, and if that happens, we wanted to see what are the opportunities for the city and how might this be a public benefit in the long run? So, we're working with an economist, and Cara will tell you a little bit more about the economist in a moment, but we didn't want the city or partners within the community to be caught sort of unaware or have to respond to, you know, dam removal when it happens without having given significant forethought to it. So, we wanted to take this moment to think about, again, what are the opportunities for businesses in the community, looking at it from a property valuation standpoint, from a standpoint of potential businesses that could be created around the restored river or existing businesses, how they might benefit. So, there will be some opportunities for public discussion. We're going to have a couple forums. The economists that we're working with will come to the community, so we'd really love to have your participation throughout this process, hopefully a couple city council members, perhaps some city staff as well. So, it's a process that we're funding along with the Downey Salmon Federation and the Union Salmon Association.
Yeah, I'll just add that the community process, sort of how we came to this place of a structure to work within the confines of what it is that we're trying to extract from this study. We are structuring this very much so, some of you are familiar with the asset mapping project that we did in 2022 and then completed with city support in 2023. We have actually retained the same consulting company, Hub Collective. They are very familiar with working with communities that are at the head of national parks, just like Ellsworth is, and since our long-term relationship with them and our first project with them, Manifesting Maine, the asset map project that we completed last year with them, they then decided that they wanted to, they were interested in the project, but really wanted to be able to add to the project by bringing in a water economist. So, Jen Gibbard, who is our contact at Hub and who we worked with to do the asset mapping project, found a water economist by the name of Janet Clemens, who is from One Water.
Sorry, that's three minutes.
Okay. We will just be making sure that the city has all the information that they need, and then I think you folks have the one-page. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before you sit, was there a date of the first forum that you mentioned, Aaron? The discussion, information section, are those not scheduled yet?
The, we had the first one last week, the kickoff meeting, but we're waiting to get some information before we have the next meeting, but we will be meeting monthly, and we will be getting those dates to, to the city manager to share with staff and council, so, thank you.
Thanks.
What dam?
Leonard Lake Dam?
Good evening. My name is Glenn Austin. I'm a resident here. I've been here for about seven years. I'm from away, as they say, so some of the customs here, some of the norms, I'm not quite familiar with, so this is a journey of discovery for all of us, I think. Six days ago, last Tuesday, June 11th, I went to Family and Friends Marketplace for groceries. Upon arrival, I smelled, you know, this great scent. I couldn't explain it. It was like the scent of death, you know? You know, there's a dead rat in the attic or something, and you just can't figure out what it was. So, I go to the marketplace for groceries, and I'm smelling this big stink. I couldn't figure out what it was, so I went into, did my grocery shopping, came out, same smell, and I mean strong, overwhelming smell. I think they smelled it, excuse me, in Blue Hill. I talked to different people. Anyway, so I went inside to get the manager, the owner of the marketplace, Matt. I know him from, you know, from shopping there. We went outside with another worker, and still the same smell, and he says to me, "I know what that is." He says, "That's the city of Ellsworth processing waste at the Waste Management Site on Industrial Road." They're turning the pile, which they do periodically, right? So, another merchant, three miles, so marketplace is two miles from the industrial complex, industrial road complex. Another merchant, three miles down the road, what do you call it, Oak Street and the Banger Road, told me, he went into his basement looking for something dead, because, you know, the stink was so bad, so rather going upstairs to prepare for the day, you know, kind of meals for lunchtime, he's downstairs looking for something dead. So, I called the City of Ellsworth Police Department. I talked to the clerk. I called code enforcement. I contacted the Maine DEP, which is the Environmental Protection People for Maine. I filed a petition with the US EPA, and I refiled a, what do you call it? I refiled my claim with EPA after I looked into the matter a little bit. Do you folks remember the?
Excuse me, that's, that's three minutes.
Three minutes? Okay. You remember the great plague?
But please send us an email with what, I'd like to hear what else you have to say, if you could send it to us through email.
We probably could elucidate some of these things for you.
Yeah. So, the problem's not in a isolated event. It's been known to this council, it's been known.
I just think we have to keep everybody to three minutes. Thank you.
Anyway, we can do better this. We can. If you want to drive people like the Treehouse from here, keep stuff like this going on, we can do better as a community. Thank you. Sorry for running off here.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Number nine, council comments. Everyone looks at you, Councilor Helen.
Is it my turn?
It's your turn.
Do I have three minutes?
Yeah, you have three minutes. I'll time you, you got three minutes.
This is a time when usually I poke at something that is unpopular, but to surprise everybody, I want to talk about something that is extremely popular. And probably everyone in this room knows more about it than I, but I heard second-hand information, because I'm not on social media, about the recovery of a stolen dog in Ellsworth. Everyone has probably heard some part of this. And just contacted the person that was involved, and I just want to recite a little bit of the event that I learned, that a dog was stolen from a car on Water Street. It was about a 30-minute delay before the police was called. It appears that the vehicle was running with air conditioning on, but they pushed the window down and they stole a puppy. Again, the police had a 30-minute lead back time, because it wasn't called in for 30 minutes. But in five and a half hours from the time that dog was stolen, the Ellsworth City Police recovered the dog and returned it to the owners and charged the criminals. That's amazing. Absolutely amazing that in.
If it was in my house, I'd give him one.
In five and a half hours, think of this. This is equal to a child abduction in our city. And in five and a half hours, they took that interest and they went crazy with it, and they solved a crime, and they returned this puppy.
And you did that in two minutes and 24 seconds. Well done.
When's my next three?
I like this.
Yeah, it's good. Thanks for sharing that. I actually, I hadn't heard that.
It's a great story.
And it's, it is the power of social media and Facebook. They will post regularly photographs of people they're looking for, and I saw they were looking for people with a nice puppy, and then it was, puppy has been returned.
How they did it?
So, it works.
Doesn't matter to me. I'm glad that they did it. I'm glad they took an interest. I'm sure most of their calls about dogs are stray dogs, that it's low on the priority list, but this is an amazing story.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Okay. All right, so, on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Council Order Number 062400, request of the Deputy Treasurer Tax Collector to set the real estate and personal property tax due dates at September 12, 2024, and March 13, 2025. Number 11, Council Order 062401, request of the Deputy Treasurer Tax Collector for an order of the municipal officers on the. an order of the municipal officers on the application of real estate and personal property tax payments. This order will allow the tax collector and treasurer to apply tax payments against the oldest unpaid tax bills. Does it motion?
Make a motion. Move to set the real estate and personal property tax due dates to September 12th, 2024, and March 13th, 2025, and an order to allow the tax collector and treasurer to apply tax payments against the oldest unpaid tax bill.
Any motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, we can't. All those in favor? Unanimous? Item number 12, new business. So we have four licenses, but I'm asking to break them up. Usually we have one public hearing and to hear them all, but we have Fogtown Brewing on here, which council or senate will need to abstain, so I'm just going to break them up. So we'll have the first three and then a second public hearing on the next one. So public and hearing action on the applications for renewal for the following licenses. Pavita Visitroot Young, DBA Tysonah, 321 High Street for renewal of a city class C license, liquor and vixeler, renewal of a state restaurant malt and vinus, class three and four liquor license. Zepa's New York Pizza, 92 Water Street for renewal of class C liquor, vixeler and renewal of a state liquor license, class three and four. LGN LLC, DBA Forest Ridge Campground, 40 Flockamoose and Way for renewal of city lodging license. Open the public hearing. Any comments? Seeing none? Close the public hearing?
Move to approve, all.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Okay. Public hearing in action on Fogtown Brewing, 25 Pine Street for renewal of a city class B license liquor, vixeler amusement, and renewal of a state brewing license. Open the public hearing. Close the public hearing.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in, all those in favor? Abstain? Oh, I approved it too, sorry. Thank you, sorry.
I've been told I need to get closer to the mic, can't hear me.
Council Order Number 062402, appointment of city officials by the city council. These are reappointments, some of them. Manager Pierce stated that we do need to change the.
This is page 14.
Page 14.
So is your recommendation to change city clerk, registrar of voters, freedom of access officer, all to Sue?
To Sue McLean.
And it'd be considered interim on all of those?
On interim basis, correct.
Okay.
Move to approve as written.
Second.
Second. Excellent.
Right.
Discussion?
Did you mean to say as written?
Or as.
Oh, I didn't.
I don't mean to be.
No, that's fine.
Move to approve as written, with the exception of city clerk, registrar of voters, freedom of access officer, all be changed interim, and Suzanne McLean. Thank you.
Do you accept that amendment?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Those.
Oh, oh, sorry, oop, sorry.
Those two positions come with an additional stipend for, for Sue for that extra one?
Yes, yes. Sue and I are still working out the final arrangements for that, but yes, and there may also be one for Tina, who's, we've already had a previous discussion in finance about her expanding responsibilities in general assistance. This would be an expansion of that, but I think it's also, and I'll talk further on Thursday, about some of the staffing requests, you know, per council's requests, we've broken them all out from sort of what they were prior to my arrival as a staffer recommendation with the costs associated with that are, and then sort of my manager's recommendation on, you know, potential business process redesign strategic alignment to, you know, make sure we're more capable here in Ellsworth. So we can talk more on Thursday, I think, about that.
Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous? Okay. Council Order Number 062403, approval of city manager appointments.
And this one would also, the deputy welfare director swapping in Sue as an interim basis as well. I think that's the only Tony one that was in this piece. Yes.
Move to approve as amended?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Number 15, Council Order Number 062404, request of the Deputy Treasurer Tax Collector to set the interest rate at 6% on overdue taxes.
Good evening. I'm Sue McLean, tax collector, and this is my annual visit to ask about setting the tax, the interest rate. So the maximum rate of interest is established by the treasurer of state and is based on the prime rate published in the Wall Street Journal. This year, the treasurer of state has posted a maximum interest rate of 8.5%. Last year was 8%. Last year, we decided to go with 6% interest rate for overdue taxes, and I'm proposing that we keep it the same. I don't think for that half interest rate that we need to make any changes to it at this point, but I'm putting that out to you as to what you decide to do.
Sue, could you give us a ballpark of what that interest rate burden is on the general public?
Well, I was looking, yes, I was looking that up and, I don't think I brought it with me, but it was for the fiscal year of '24 so far. We had about, just a little over $27,000 in interest brought in. I'm in the process of working on liens and in looking at that, which was just today, looks like if, if it goes right till the end, people pay at the last minute, it, it will be about 23,000 more thousand brought in.
I think that's pretty average per year.
Yeah, that's what it looks like. And actually, this year, it's starting to look like I won't have nearly the amount of liens going out as I have had in the past.
Oh, interesting.
So, yeah.
If we're in discussion mode, or do we need a motion first? I think the 6% makes sense when I was looking at this and then looking at what will likely be proposed for the tax anticipation borrowing. It seems like it was a good balance that if we're having to borrow money because we're not having money come in, that at least it's equalized so that the burden is shared appropriately. So I think that makes sense.
Could you just walk us through a quick, just so the public that's watching can hear the process, at what point they start having to accrue interest? Where does that start? How does it?
Yep. So we set, which we did a little bit earlier here, we set the due dates of the taxes. So the very, you have your first installment, the next day, interest starts to accrue on that amount, on what hasn't been paid that was due. And that again happens on the second installment, when that's not paid, interest will start to accrue on, on that amount as well, and, and anything at that point that hasn't been paid.
And to further that, when you, you're accruing interest and when it gets to the point of liens, that interest amount is in the lien, correct?
Yes.
Plus legal fees, plus all of that?
Right. And it, it actually gets, I mean, I can break it out so that it can be seen separately, but once you go to lien, at that point, it gets added in to the principal and then you're, but you're still accruing interest after that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Move to set the interest rate on overdue taxes at 6%.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Number 16, public hearing in action on Council Orders Number 062405, request of the interim treasurer to authorize tax anticipation borrowing or TAN for the amount of $3 million.
That's me. Nate Moore, interim finance director. As you can see in front of you, I reached out to six banks in regards to the tax anticipation note for the upcoming fiscal year. I received three banks' proposals and I am recommending moving forward with First National Bank at 5.96% and the interest is showing there, obviously, based on if we pull the full amount for the full fiscal year.
So I did just want to add that a tax anticipation note is used for financing governmental activities and obligations of the city in anticipation of the tax funds coming in. There is like a detailed analysis that's done to determine how much money that the city is going to need, just to give the public some more information on the reasons why we need tax anticipation note.
Move to award the.
Oh, wait, I have a public hearing, sorry.
Oh, yes, sorry, forgot, sorry.
Okay. Open the public hearing? Anyone? Okay. Close the public hearing? Now I'll take a motion.
Okay. Move to award the tax anticipation note low bid to First National Bank at an interest rate of 5.96%.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Okay. Number 17, Council Order Number 062406, request the city clerk to accept the results of the municipal school validation and referendum election. Manager Pierce?
Sorry.
Number 17, the, accept the results. Do you have any information on that to give to the public?
Yeah, this is the municipal ballot of the school election, which was approved, so it's moving forward with that. There's also a chart, or a change to sort of win the ballot papers, I think it's 100 days ahead of time, right, Ebony? And there's a brief memo from Tony in here towards the end, clerk's return of the votes cast, that explains the ballot amendments, the ones that move forward. And following this, should you so approve, we will move to, and a lot of it's kind of a, you know, we basically had to make our ballots available for those pulling papers for this election a little earlier, so literally like next week, we're going to start getting those into the process. So you've already put it on the school budget, but we'll accept the results of this referendum. There's regularities and it's a good dry run too for this presidential season, which will probably be a lot busier as well, so.
Move to approve the acceptance of the June 11, 2024, City of Ellsworth School Budget Validation and Municipal Referendum Election Results as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Okay. Number 18, Council Order Number 062407, request of the highway superintendent to accept the FY 2025 winter salt bid.
And I'm, I gave Adam a time, he's incredibly busy, and pulled him off a few things. I went, and this one seems pretty straightforward. It's, you know, we're lumping together the state of Maine, which we did for the first time last year because they got a better price at this, you know, you know, negotiating as a group. This year is even more, even a better price than the previous year at $71 versus $75, you know, when we had put this out to bid it, but 78.45 a ton. So feeling good about this price point and I think we'll move forward and lock in our salt for next winter.
This was a state negotiated bid as well, it's like a bunch of municipalities.
Yeah, and from talking to Adam, the city previously could not have been a part of that bid, they did their own bidding process, but they did the bidding process and they realized that we're, the state was getting a better price than last year. They started first, the first time going with the state bid, and this one is now, again, it's even under last year's bid, so.
Great. Move to approve the request of the highway superintendent to go into an agreement with Maine DOT and their winter salt supply contract with Eastern Salt Co. at $71 per ton of delivered road salt. The contract amount to be funded from the highway department operating budget.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Number 19, presentation of Old Burial Camp, Old Burial Ground Mapping Project by V. Kelly Bellis, and this is sponsored by Councilor Smith.
And I would just, as he's walking up, say, this is really cool, that we have a gentleman who voluntarily did an inventory and mapping of the old burial ground, which is out behind the church up on State Street. It was the launching part of our James Walk earlier this year and is here to present the findings and conversations about printing that, I think the historic preservation commission will cover the costs, but it's a great chance to highlight some terrific work.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name's Kelly Bellis. Thank you for sponsoring this, Nancy, and good evening to everybody. Let's see if this will work. I, I came in last week and Jason helped. I don't know if it's necessary even. Has everybody looked at the PDFs? Anybody not look at the PDFs? John?
They're, they're slow loading, but they're.
Oh, okay.
They're all there. It's the, it's the city.
Are the public concerned too?
This. Oh, goody. Okay. Yeah. So. This is a rehearsal for Wednesday, by the way. Maybe not. So the original idea was to give the presentation to you guys and then Jen Sala suggested bringing this before the Historic Preservation Commission because they've got some money that will help underwrite the printing costs. So let's, let's see what we got here. No, that's not it. Okay, so. All right. So this is what, this is the digital version. Now, I noticed on the packet page on the Ellsworth City website for tonight's agenda, they had some dated versions of this document here, so, and in particular, it was the one for the, for the printer. The, the other one has the hyperlinks to the various things that are linked. For example. Each one of these memorials has Find a Grave ID, and that's hyperlinked. So if we. Can we just go to that? Open? No internet. Okay. Well. Anyway, if we, if I had this figured out ahead of time before coming up here, we would have gone to Find a Grave for that particular memorial. Many of them, many of these memorials have been. Many of them, many of these memorials have been uploaded and prepared and entered by my sidekick here, Dottie Bashan. And so together, we transcribed the stones and, and we got this spreadsheet for all the stones that are in the cemetery. This graph shows the age of death and the year of death, and you can see a lot of them stopped after about the Civil War. And there's other statistical information presented in the report, but the idea of the report is that it's available to anybody without charge digitally, and the printed version would be at a modest cost. And I don't know where on the city's website this might be located. I was looking at that earlier. I'll leave it to you, but there were a couple of places. One might be the Historic Preservation Page. There's some logic in putting it there, and another place that seemed like it might be logical would be vital statistics. People who are looking for death records and that sort of thing would gravitate towards there. There could be other outlets for this information, such as Ellsworth Historical Society on their webpage. There's a new, and some of you probably already know this, but History Trust. If you haven't heard it, heard of it, you will in the coming days, but History Trust has a center of, on the island, MDI, but it will encompass a larger geographic area. Frenchman Bay, Blue Hill Bay, we'll say coastal Hancock County at this point, but they represent a consortium of participants, including Ellsworth Historical Society and other historical societies, and their digital collections will be made available. So it'll be a geographically centered outlet or portal for digital information. Anyway, I'm probably at the end of my three minutes.
You don't have, because it's not, you're actually on the agenda.
Oh, okay. So.
I mean, yeah. Within reason.
You shouldn't have told me that, because I would shut up. So that was the main thing, was that the money for the printing was presented in the email I sent to all of you, and hopefully on Wednesday, if we're meeting still on Wednesday, that will be decided then. And as far as how the paper copies get sold, one of the ideas that I wanted to incorporate in the final version before it goes through the printer is like a form, an order form. So between the commission and the council, decide on a price that you think is going to be reasonable. I gave you the breakdown on the quotes from the printers, the map printer and the booklet printer. So, for example, at 25 bucks, if that's what everybody decides is a fair price, then that could be incorporated into the form. And so any publication or promotion would have a link to wherever it might be on the city's website, so the order could be placed online, for example, or from other outlets like Ellsworth Historical Society and anyplace else that makes sense. And the same goes for the paper, the sale of the paper copies, the map and the report. So we can talk more about if it's decided on by then, on Wednesday, or sometime after that.
Yeah. It's something, you're on chairman.
You need to come up to the mic.
I'm Tom Clark, and I'm the chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission. I spoke with this gentleman for a couple hours about this project, and he's done an absolutely wonderful job. The amount of research and planning and design is incredible, really has set a really high level of professionalism in what he's done. The only thing I would say, and I have to pick up my wife up from work in a minute, so excuse me if I'm rushed, is that I would urge the city to pay for this project, whether you take it out of the Historic Preservation Commission's budget, and we certainly have enough money remaining, or if you just want to budget it out of your own. I can't approve having it taken out of the commission until we meet, because I don't, although I do represent them, I can't speak for them. We have to have a decision and a meeting, so I'll leave it up to you on how to finance this. But my final word is that I really urge you to approve the expenditure of about $500, $600 for this project. It really is an important project, it's important to the survivors of the families buried here, to the veterans that are buried here, and it is a historic landmark listed under the city, and the city has a responsibility to present this information to the public. And as a note, excuse me being nervous, but the man who donated that land, I think it was in 1818 or 1820, he donated that whole parcel of land for a graveyard, and then he died and was the first person to be buried there.
Oh, goodness. That's, that's planning ahead. I would, I would simply, simply echo what Tom said again, as the council's representative to the Historic Preservation Commission, this has been, there's been a lot of emails back and forth, first about this amazing document with the maps that come with it, that have been prepared on a voluntary basis from these two folks, and then the concept of it will be available digitally, what do you do about print, and we've got ideas tossing around. As Tom noted, the commission meets on Wednesday, there's been email about the ideas, and it'll be brought up then, but there, it does seem that there may be money from this year's budget that could be reallocated to this. And then, again, we churned more ideas about could it be fundraisers for different organizations, so there's great potential for it, but I think recognizing the voluntary effort that went into this extraordinary document is exciting, it was worth bringing to the council at this time, so that you all were aware of it as well, as the commission is working on it. So thanks for the volunteers and for Tom, for meeting with him ahead of time.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
Can you tell them about the drones?
Sure. So just real briefly, the process began with surveying the ground control. There's three points, we'll zoom in. There's ground control point one, it's over there by the DMV. Number two, this was a, this is sort of a funny story. This is a, this was right when the, you know, the guy with the broom, I don't know who it was with Public Works, but anyway, the street sweeping, you know, the big bristly cylinder. Anyway, there's still a lot of sand, and I go out there, this is late February or something like that, and I swept it real clean and made the spray paint. That's the X, you can see the X, that's just a black paint. But anyway, he kept going back and forth, I had to keep resweeping and repainting it. But anyway, that's GCP 2, and then the third point is over here, this was just a six-inch paper plate with some white Doug tape on it. But these three points, one, two, and three, are the surveyed ground control points, which have a very precise location, and then the drone flew in a pattern, basically east and west and north and south, kind of like lawnmower going over the same ground twice. And from that, and I, actually I have a, oh, here we are again with that.
Good.
I was going to show you the, the model, the 3D model that was generated from the, I don't know, it was 191 photos, or whatever the number was, but through, it's a quasi-photogrammetry. The photos rendered a 3D model, and from that then this projection. And so that's how we started. We start with an aerial image. So this has all been projected flat, and like, things like this were mistaken initially as headstones, they were actually footstones. And they're not all there, not every grave has a footstone. But you can also see from this aerial photo, sort of on the screen, the tonal, the modalities of tone that start to form a grid where there are no headstones. So this is one of the interesting things about this, was the lack of stones. And the rumors, which have been around for more than 100 years, 130 years, and they keep echoing through time, that the remains have been removed and maybe went to Woodbine. Woodbine didn't come into existence until 1859, but the idea is to maybe somehow, and so they start about 1896, these ideas of removed remains, but it may just have been imagination fill in these spots where there's these absences of stones. We don't know, but there's no evidence showing the transfer of remains. That's one of the things that I kind of got distracted by. That, you know, there's the rumor, and then there's no evidence of anything to support it. In the report, there's this example. So here's three maps, basically of the same area, 1855, 1860, and 1875, and in the top two, 55 and 60, you can see the Jones Cemetery, a family cemetery, in what is now Church Street. This is Church Street, but it stopped at Oak. In 1875, it was extended. So in the lower map is where the Jones Cemetery used to be, and here in Woodbine is the remains, or at least the memorial for the people who died the earliest in 1788. So the idea of transferred remains is evidenced by record and what we find out on the ground, but that was for Jones Cemetery. We don't find anything like that for the old burial ground. So this photo shows some of the landscaping, the border, and if you go over there and you check this out, these are thick pieces of slate, and here's a foundation of a headstone. And this may have been a remodeling effort that took place 20 years ago or something. But here's one of those pieces in which you can still read, this was just sort of one of the stock sayings that they inscribed on there, but you can see the stone, this was clearly a headstone. Whether it came from the old burial ground or not, we don't know, but anyway, there's a little bit of discussion about all that in here. And this is an earlier, I've also included an earlier transcription from about 1980, '81. So, and the green dots just means we find those stones in 2024. But there's a couple that we don't find in 2024. That's what the red squares are about. Here's another photo showing just a collection of nothing remarkable kind of stones, they may have been footstones, given their proportion and size, but they've just sort of been heaped up on top of, this may have been another foundation for a headstone, but.
Can I ask, Kelly, how did you come to choose this cemetery?
Well, there was a faux trial in February for Moses Adams. He murdered his wife, nearly chopped her head off, and the day of the faux trial is a Saturday morning.
Do you want to say what year that happened, just to be clear?
Yeah, yeah, that happened in 1850.
Thank you. It's just good to have that clear, yeah.
Anyway, on the way to the trial, I stopped by to see if I could find her, Mary. And I found her without a whole lot of effort. And I, where is that, you say? Okay. Now you can, you can see her here. She's buried right next to her murdering husband. It's really, it's the most insulting thing, and it still sort of infuriates me.
So he was convicted in the trial then, or?
He was acquitted. The jury couldn't come to a consensus. Anyway, that's how.
Thank you. No, that's, I think that's terrific, and so this, we all have it, we're looking to make it available digitally for anyone, and then again, Wednesday, the commission will talk about how to pay for print copies that can be available different ways, and the stories that come from this, I think, are fascinating, and it is a shame, when we did the Jane's Walk, you could see, it's like somebody was tidying up the cemetery and just took portions, broken portions of stones and put them in a pile, instead of leaving them where they were, but they're, I think, beautiful stories that come from this, so I appreciate the work both of you did to bring this to Ellsworth, and it's looking good for sharing it as broadly as we can.
I'll take that as a hook and I'll, well, we'll unplug.
Great job.
We're there.
Very nice.
Thank you.
I just want to echo Nancy's gratitude for how much work that must have been, that looks like an incredible amount of work, and I assume you guys are going to talk about making a copy available in the library.
Oh, yeah.
The public library, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and also Folger Public, or Fogler, sorry, Special Collections, maybe Digital Maine, I'm still talking with them about maybe getting that there. I did another archiving project back about 25 years ago, and it was on the Dodge Papers, and I made CDs and distributed them all over the place, including the library and Fogler, and I'd be surprised if anybody can find them, including the registry deeds, but that's like an item that might eventually be available from the History Trust, so.
Great.
Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It seems, Nancy, it seems like if the commission wants to reencumber some of the funds from FY 24 into that project, they would.
That was what we were looking. That was what we were looking to do and then check with Charlie to see if that has to, it's $500 or less if they have the funds. Again, this is a conversation for the commission to have, but that's what the discussion has been. I just, I advise not coming to the city at this time looking for money, given what we've been doing and thought, you know, the commission might be an option. So, they'll, they'll bring it up. By the sound of the council, we're certainly interested in moving it forward, and that looks like a good way to do that.
And then, will the commission also determine, like, what, we would sell it to somebody that wanted a copy of it for?
Well, it's an interesting, I guess we can explore further, like, is this a gift to the city? Is this like free and everybody can do whatever they want? We've talked about it as a fundraiser for the Ellsworth Historical Society. Could the commission use it? A bunch of different ideas to explore. But we'll be continuing to talk with Kelly again. He'll present to the commission, and then we can give you an update. And I can check with Charlie on anything we need permission to do. But it's just a pretty exciting thing to be able to puzzle through and figure out how we're going to do it.
Very cool.
I can't wait to get it properly. Thank you. So, thank you again.
Gosh, I like you. Much quicker than Michelle in the chair of town.
Item number 20, adjournment?
Hold on.
Oh, whoops, sorry, sorry.
So close.
Before we adjourn, could, Charlie, could you, on the July agenda, put on the agenda for the courthouse group to be able to come and present their ideas? I may not be with them, but I think that we owe it to that group to let them tell the council their thoughts on this process.
I actually, in thinking this through, I see this as something that might be a workshop separate from the city council, because there's no action to be taken. But I think we have had conversations trying to figure out what to do with this. It's not that the council hasn't been doing anything, but it's not to the point of making public what we think might happen. So, I think a workshop in July would be a better fit, just to bring folks up to speed. It's, my understanding is workshops are more conversational than action items. And we will miss each other if we get to the point where we're only meeting once a month for city council meetings. So, I think to have a workshop on that setting separate might be appropriate.
So long as we have an effective moderator, just to keep things moving and.
Casey was on it. Sorry, I can do the timer.
I just think that we need to hear from the people that elected us, even if maybe we're not on the same pattern, or some of us are, some of us aren't. But I'd like to hear, without them being limited to their three minutes. They asked to be on the agenda. I like the workshop idea better, but they have been pushing to be on the agenda. So, I think the workshop is more effective. I would agree with you. But.
And maybe by then, we'll have, I'm sorry to interrupt.
They asked for the agenda, and I think, I think it should be on the agenda, unless that group would like to have the workshop. But it was clear that they wanted to be on the agenda.
I think they.
They asked me 100 times to present this as an agenda. I agree with you, but this group has asked to be on the agenda, and certainly, we've had many things on the agenda just for the presentation of things.
Maybe we could talk to Mr. Workman and that group's members and see if they'd be willing to do a workshop, because I do think it's more conversational when it's, and it's.
Yeah. And nothing else on the agenda, so we aren't feeling pressure. We can focus on that.
Yeah, and it'd be the only thing that they talked about. And we could still have it televised.
Yeah, of course.
I will follow back up. Obviously, councils have it at their discretion if they'd like something on the agenda for presentations, as we saw tonight. But let me follow up with you all, and we'll see about the workshop idea as well.
Let me reach out to them. I received a call today asking for it to be on the agenda from
Yeah, I think.
Many people. And I like the workshop idea. If we could get a few of those people that want to present their ideas, et cetera, at a workshop and their agreement, I'm game.
And maybe if we can present something on conversations and trying to puzzle through what our role can be for this.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, I like it.
Agreed.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Not a debatable item.